Call the City Council Work Session to Order. Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilperson Germaine.
Here.
Here.
Father Whitman.
Here.
Ike Goangeli.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. So we have a couple items on the agenda for the work session, so I'm going to just turn it right over to Mr. Pastu, so we can get through those items, and we have other things yet this evening.
All right, thank you. Your Honor, first item is the Christmas Magic in Monroe Event and Parade. Vince Botterford and Captain Chad Tolstead will do a presentation recap of last year's event and talk about the upcoming event.
Great, thank you. Yes, welcome Vince.
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor. It's great to be here again, and council members, city staff. I'm Vince Botterford, and I've been working on this event. This will be my third year. So it's great to be here and report out like we did last year on how the event went, and then what is it going to look like for the coming year.
Sure.
Really, one of the most important things with this whole event is our partnership with the city, and Chad, Captain Tolstead's really our key person. And really, I can't compliment him enough on his hard work and diligence. And then also, I want to introduce Orestes Baez with the Monroe News. He is with our company that owns the Monroe News, which is, as you know, the presenting sponsor of the event. So Orestes will have some comments as well. But first of all, I just want to say that this second year was really remarkable. It was a big improvement from the year before. We made a lot of enhancements. We listened to a lot of the suggestions and concerns that we heard from the community. We reversed the direction of the parade. We expanded the hours just a little bit. We moved the staging area to the riverfront parking lot. So there are lots of things that we did to try and improve the overall aesthetics of the event, and, you know, make it easier and more fun for people to attend, also reduce the impact, you know, to our downtown merchants. So we tried to take all that into consideration, but it was really enjoyed by a lot of folks. And the top picture, I think, shows you the scale of the size of the event, how many folks came to enjoy it. So it was a lot of fun. This is a map, an overall overlay of the event. You can see at the top the staging area where the parking lot was. The big green line is the route of the parade. The big blue box is what we called Winter Wonderland, that had Vendor Village and the carriage rides and Santa and all that. So that was, you know, a good overview. We publicized this in the Monroe News, online with our own website, other media, so that everyone would know, you know, where street closures were. We intend to repeat the same footprint exactly this year with minor changes, but really nothing significant, other than maybe enhancing some parking for the public, some access, probably add a couple more portable restrooms. But overall, what you're seeing here is what we proposed to do for the 2019 event. So a few of the things that the event included, but I think the big story for us is the date for this year's event. And the date that we selected was Saturday, December 14th, which is the second Saturday. It's the immediate Saturday after Christmas in Ida. So Christmas, the weekends are stacked up a little differently this year than they were before, where we were planning originally of taking just the third Saturday. That's just not possible. It's too close. It's just a couple days from Christmas. There's a lot going on both of those weekends. Everybody's walking on everybody. So there's really no way around that. We'll do the best we can to be as considerate as we can to any other event going on. But what we're looking forward to is easily over 70 lighted parade entries. We'll do the Winter Wonderland, the Vendor Village, which is heated, live music, food trucks, two live nativities. We did Legos in the library, which are a big hit. Kids really liked that. Lots of public temporary restrooms. We put gas heaters up and down the route, as well as in Winter Wonderland. Santa's Pavilion was a hit. We did ice skating, carriage rides, all that. So we intend to repeat all those elements and then add a few other things as well. You know, it really wouldn't happen without our sponsors, so I just want to at least acknowledge them to you today on who they were. Our, probably our most important sponsor is you. Without the City of Monroe and your cooperation and your assets and the footprint, you know, this all happens on public property, which is right here in downtown. So you're noted as our number one presenting partner, just to show our appreciation for that, as well as the Visitors Bureau, the Police Department, the Chamber of Commerce are our key partners, as well as our media partners and all the other sponsors. So plus over 100 local volunteers, so service clubs, lots of folks, you know, join us. I know Michelle was there down in the parking area, so I mean, we were, you know, you were in the parade, Your Honor. So it was just a great, you know, evening for the folks to come together. Some event highlights is, like I said, it really is a community partnership. We work closely with all the different departments, merchants, you know, community leaders, nonprofits, volunteers. So it kind of brings everyone together. Captain Tolstead will talk more about, from the city's point of view, with regard to incidents, which were none. But we really view it as a family holiday event that promotes downtown Monroe and the merchants. So it improves the quality of life over the holidays, something to do right here locally in town that's free. Virtually everything there for the public to do is of no cost. So that's kind of cool. So we have started to work on the brand new event for 2019. The website is christm magicinmonroe.com. It's also on Facebook at Magic in Monroe. So we invite you to have a look at that, but we have started. Just keep a look at the website. You can get updates as well as in the Monroe News. So what we plan to do is repeat basically what we've done in the past couple of years with some further enhancements. The date, we talked about that, same footprint. Really kind of a neat element was to reverse the direction of the parade. That went over really well. I think it helped us on a lot of different ways, but it certainly, you know, got people talking about what was going on. It made a lot of sense actually the night that we did it as well. We plan on increasing some public amenities, viewing areas, heaters, hospitality. And I just want to let you know that the special event permit request is on its way, probably within the next week or so. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Captain Tolstead, who has his report, and then Orestes will have some comments as well, and then we'll wrap it up.
Thank you, Vince.
You bet.
Good evening. Just a few comments to go along with what Vince has reported out, that we didn't have any police-related issues at the events. We also didn't have any medical reported incidents at the event, so it was a very quiet event, a very peaceable event. The petition seekers that we had the year before, in 2017, they were going around seeking signatures for their petitions. To my recollection, we didn't have any in 2018, but we did some education with our officers ahead of time in how to handle those petitioners appropriately. If there was one, we handled it appropriately and was without issue. Some of the issues we ran onto earlier last year, in the 2017 year, was we did an excellent job of clearing the streets the night before. Unattained consequences was we had open businesses. So to combat that, this year, we ISDPS, which they were great to work with, post out signs two weeks in advance where, when this event is, the date of the events, when we're, what, when we're closing the streets, when we're restricting parking, to give the, all the businesses advance notice as well. Also spoke with personally some of the downtown business owners, myself, to advise them of that, to keep up the good community relations with our downtown businesses as well. There was some confusion early on, I think about a week out from the event, when we started posting these things, that we were closing it the whole day. Those were rumors that were quickly dispelled with the help of Paula Staniford. What helped dispel those rumors that we weren't closing and restricting parking the whole day wasn't until 3:00 PM, which we put out specific signage for that, which was a good recommendation from several people, to what time we were actually going to close parking on Front Street was the biggest area concern. All the traffic blockages from the year before, which I had clapped them too far in, were pushed back out, so we didn't have any people having to do U-turns in a tight area as well. We upgraded the blockages for safety along the parade route to keep unauthorized vehicles out of the event area. As Vince has reported out, the reversing of the parade route went very well. The disbanding of the units and the collection of the, when they grouped together before also went well, with no issues. One of the things we did differently in 2018 was we created an incident action book, which is basically every form we would need to know is all collected in this book, which has our emergency and contingency plans. If something were to go wrong during the parade, we were prepared. Worked together that with the EMD Monroe Fire Department and the Monroe County Ambulance as well on that book. The fire department staffed this event with two paramedics. We, Monroe County Ambulance also was on scene there. They brought an ambulance along with their two gators for any medical needs, which fortunately, there was none this year. We received a list of participating floats from the event organizers, and we had more robust officers on foot patrol this year because the crowd attendance was predicted to be a lot larger. So we had a very visible presence of police officers in the downtown area, which I believe contributed to a peaceful, peaceful event. Some improvements we're looking forward to next year is additional improved communications with other first responders, with our fire department and with Monroe County Ambulance. Also planning, earlier planning for this event, getting a good, in a good head start on all the events, because it's very robust, to get all these things organized and to put in place for the event that day. And also, kind of a minor note, but a safety issue would be to advise any of the floats not to throw candy from the floats. We've kind of gotten away from that as a city. We've, I've noticed more and more increase of it. Going back, I found some old documentation and sent those out as long as the parade, that they need to walk out to the curbs. It prevents kids from coming in the streets. But working with Vince Botterford and all the people from Monroe News was excellent. They were very open to any suggestions, anything that would, could be allowed and not allowed. And also working with our local DPS, Patrick Lewis, Bill Walters, and Dave Tubbs were excellent. They were excellent to work with, and they were very accommodating for all the road, the many road closures I requested, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Captain.
Thanks, Captain.
Vince.
And then I'd like to introduce Orestes Baez, our group publisher for Michigan and our presenting sponsor, producer for the event. So with that, I'll introduce you.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Mayor Clark, council members, thank you for allowing me a few minutes.
Yes.
Gatehouse, Michigan is a collection of 10 newspapers, of which Monroe is one of the most important, and of course, under Vince's leadership, has put on this great event with the city. We continue to believe in this event, the value of this event, the connection that we have with the community, and to maintain the continuity, even though, if you don't know, Mr. Botterford has identified his next step as semi-retirement, which I'm not sure what that means, but all we know is that he's moving to Cheyenne, Wyoming. And I'll be providing transitional leadership while we fill his position. But smartly, we even contracted him to be continuity with Christmas Magic in Monroe, so he will continue to be our point person with this event and with you, with the city, and with all the supporting departments. So we continue to believe in this process and this product, this event, and we just, we wanted to get bigger and bigger and keep in the good graces of the city. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity to partner and allowing Vince to fly back from Wyoming to be with us again. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that, Obe. Well, that pretty much wraps up our update and also what we plan to do for 2019. I'd just like to ask if you have any questions, if there's any other information we can give you or...
Sure, Vince. I'll see if there's any questions. Kelly.
I don't, I don't have a question, but I wanted to thank you all for involving Oaks and our local library branch, Navarre. Our young people are able to sell hot chocolate, and you all allowed them to keep the money to put into later fun events they want to do. So we really appreciate that. The children really loved it. It worked out well for us as well, because McGady's allowed us to refill up our hot water. As we ran out, the hot chocolate was really a big hit, so I want to thank you for including our children. Thank you. It was a great event.
Thank you, Councilmember Vining. Appreciate that.
Other questions or comments from council? It was a great event. I know the council was down as well, at various locations. It was a fun event. I think the route was a great idea to adjust. I think it really kept people also in the Louranger Square area at the conclusion. A lot of activities moved over to the stage that was there, so I thought that was good. And I know that we'll continue to strive, and it's just looking forward to this year's event as well.
For we, and we'll stay in communication. We're looking forward to it again, and thank you very much for your time tonight, so appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you for the presentation, all. Thanks for being here. Mr. Pastu.
Your Honor, is a presentation regarding a traffic study. City retained OHM advisor Steve Loveland and city engineer Patrick Lewis will do a presentation of analysis of the proposed conversion of Cass, Harrison, 7th and 8th from one way, in addition to evaluating the closing of Cass on the southern city limit just before the Kroger Center there in Monroe Township. Again, the purpose of this item is to present the analysis, the traffic study for this proposal. I'm not asking City Council to take any action tonight. I think that at the conclusion of this, we'll talk about some things that administration would recommend before proceeding with it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lewis and Mr. Loveland.
Thanks. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members.
Evening.
My name is Steve Loveland. I'm with OHM Advisors, and I was brought on by, to work with the engineering staff here to study the Cass Street traffic operations and then the one-way to two-way conversions. So why, why did they do this study? It was, it's, I think it came about because there were citizen concerns about non-residential traffic going through the local neighborhoods, and they were using Cass Street as a backdoor into and out of the Kroger Shopping Plaza there. So for what we did with this study, it studied the operations in the neighborhood there and along Cass Street and the two northern driveways at the Kroger Shopping Center. And it was, it looked at the existing condition, and then once we changed it to two-way on those local streets and closed off Cass, what would it look like then with the traffic operations? So the study began in December of 2018, and we took existing traffic counts. If you go to the next slide, it shows the map of where the, well, is there a way to fit it on the screen? Any, if we could... Okay, well, we started off in December of 2018, and we did traffic counts at, if you can zoom out a little. Okay.
Yeah.
It's all right. Sorry.
So looking at, just as he gets ready, they're looking at the arrows. That's the current configuration of the traffic flow on the streets that we're discussing.
Yes. The map that's up there shows the, the arrows show, for example, on the far right, you can see 6th Street is a two-way road, and then to the left of that is 7th. With northbound, and then 8th is just, or it's east.
West and east.
West and east, right?
It's okay.
And then you got Cass. You have the one block that's by the shopping centers, two-way, and then north of there, it's one-way heading north. So on the map, you can see the dots, the yellow dots are unsignalized intersections that were counted, and then the green dots are the signalized intersections. So there's the signal at the shopping center and then the signal at 6th Street. We also took the study up to the, to the west, all the way out to Union, and we counted the three intersections at 6th, 7th, and 8th there. For traffic counts, we counted on weekdays during the morning peak hours and the evening peak hours, and then we also did a weekend on a Saturday to pick up the midday, which is the busiest time on the weekends. Once we got all the traffic counted, we put together existing condition models. We use traffic simulation software called Synchro and Simtraffic. And what we could do with that is we put in all the existing traffic volumes, signal timing information, and then what comes out of that, it tells you how are these intersections operating? And in the traffic world, how, how you determine how an intersection is operating, they have grades that come to them, and it's letters A through F, and it's just like in school. If you have an A, it's really good. If you have an F, it's really bad. And for example, an A for an unsignalized intersection is zero to 10 seconds of delay. A B is 10 to 20 seconds. And it's, it's similar for signalized intersections. And under existing conditions, what we found is that all of these intersections operated at level of service A or B today. So our next step was to create the proposed condition model. And what this did, it would, it closed off Cass at the shopping center. So, were he showing that dot? Yep. It turned Cass into a two-way street, Harrison two-way, 7th and 8th also two-way. So now traffic can't get out of the shopping center using Cass. So we had to make some assumptions on how traffic was going to reroute through this network. And what we, some of the assumptions that we made were that 7th Street was going to carry the most amount of traffic of the east-west streets because it has the direct connection to Telegraph. So coming off of Telegraph, coming down 7th, if you can go straight east, why not stay on that road if you're going to Monroe Street? So we said 7th maybe had 50% of the traffic, and 6th and 8th would get 25%, roughly. Other assumptions, traffic that used to use the back door out of the shopping center on Cass would now be split between the two northern driveways of the shopping center, the green dot and the yellow dot. And then with the closure on Cass, now we felt that Cass would have about the same amount of traffic as Harrison because you're not going to have people coming in and out of the shopping center. So with all these assumptions and building this new model that had two-way traffic on all these streets, we again found that the operations were these level of service A and B. But we were seeing a little bit of delay for traffic trying to get out at the signalized intersection at the shopping center, or no, the, the signal, the unsignalized just to the north of there. So we had split the traffic 50-50 coming out that used to go on Cass. We said half of it would go to the unsignalized and half would go to the signal. And what we found is traffic that wanted to go north on Monroe Street from that unsignalized intersection were having a hard time getting out onto Monroe Street. So we changed our assumption from 50-50. We said, well, 70% will probably use the signal because it's a safer left turn movement out onto Monroe Street. The other assumption that we made was that anyone that currently used the 6th Street traffic signal would continue to use that traffic signal, even with 7th now is two-way. And then if 7th Street started to see any backups, traffic would divert over to 6th Street and use the traffic signal to get out onto Monroe Street. So the recommendation coming out of the study was that operationally, yes, the network could work as a converting the one ways to two-way. What we did see is the signal at the shopping center, if we put that much of the traffic coming out just that driveway, there may be a need to change the splits of that intersection to give more time to the people exiting the shopping center and less time to the Monroe Street traffic. The one thing we didn't do is look at all four of those driveways coming out of the shopping center. We didn't say, well, some of this traffic's going to shift to the two southern driveways. We just assumed all the traffic would use those two northern driveways. If we shifted some more of it to the southern driveways, that might help the signal there. But what we did recommend was to give a little bit more time coming out of the shopping center and that we would work with MDOT to get that, that change made if needed. So that's the basics of it, that we found that operationally, it, it can work as a two-way network.
Did you want to... Map up for discussion?
Sure. Did you want to talk about your stuff now, or are you going to wait?
Well, we might, might respond a bit to questions, but I can, I can address a few of Vince's, is that okay, a few? I'll head. Thanks, Steve. And hang around tight, we might need you. Honorable Mayor and Councilman Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I wanted to talk a little bit, and we really appreciate Mr. Loveland's and OHM's work on this. As we mentioned, he was, they were responsible for the operations side of things, but, and as he mentioned, and one of the things that we both want to stress with you is that operationally, there, while there may be a couple of isolated concerns, and that being that what the stacking looks... that what the stacking looks like at the traffic signal at Jones, it looks like, for the most part, those can be overcome and when we're, when we're talking about, we're talking about level of service, I think the worst thing we found was a C and that was a one approach on the Seventh and Monroe Street unsignalized intersection and that was coming from the east.
Yeah, the westbound approach.
Which doesn't carry a lot of volume. So, operationally, as you might guess, the network itself still has a lot of latent capacity in it. So, in other words, you've got, from a purely vehicular traveling standpoint, it's fine. Now, the question becomes, as we, as this traffic shifts around here, is do we have any choke points related to parking and geometrics? And I know that was one concern that we had when we first brought this up back in the summertime, is do we have any choke points? Do we have any things that we need to make, make parking considerations on? Cass Street was kind of the focus of that before because it was generally thought that Cass carries more than its fair share of traffic versus Harrison. So, if I'll focus first on the Cass-Harrison pair. Cass Street, we expect, and there's a reason that we modeled this with the closure at Kroger because we think that that's one of the driving factors that's, that if you converted Cass to two-way traffic, would in fact probably make the overall traffic volume on Cass worse because now you can get in the backway as well as getting out the backway on the same roadway. So, the belief is, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I believe we found that about half of Cass's traffic can probably be attributed to that Kroger outlet. Is that...
Yes, that's correct.
So, if you were to, if you were to look at that, right now, for the people on Cass Street, if you're concerned about traffic volumes doubling, what we're hoping to do is take half of that traffic that's out there today away. Cass Street has, is 26 feet wide for the most part between Fourth and the South City Limit. It's got parking on one side and so that gives you 18 feet of clear, clear passage. Now, it's not what you would consider in design, a full 10-foot lane for each direction to travel, but there's any number of streets in the area and as well citywide that operate just like that. And while parking on Cass is probably heavier than many of the neighborhoods, we have seen this work in a lot of places, like Washington is the same width, it's 26 for a lot of its, a lot of its length, south of Third Street, except in front of the school. That's a good parallel. Most of the numbered cross streets in this neighborhood are of similar width and have parking on one side. So, it's, it's not as though it can't be done. Harrison, there is one block on Cass, before we leave Cass, there is one block on Cass between Fifth and Sixth where there is parking on both sides of the street and that was put in place about 20 years ago due to the density of, I think it was primarily rental properties, but there's a number of like multi-units in there. That would be a potential choke point. The question we'd have to ask is, is the diminished traffic volume that's now no longer coming out of the shopping center, does that really make Cass function like it does today or is it just, just another neighborhood street, if you will? And we do have some other neighborhood streets that function with parking on both sides at 26 feet. You have to be careful with that and make sure that you've got space clear from the intersection, but that was one of the potential choke points that we think we're going to need to address. That's not a, it's not a network optimization. That's not what Mr. Loveland's firm was studying, but those are things, because it's from throughput, you can, you have plenty of, plenty of available capacity. It's just if you have two cars coming head-to-head. Harrison Street's a little more problematic. It is a little wider from Fourth Street south to the city limit. It's 28 feet, but you have parking on both sides of the street. And again, that's due to the density of houses and the number that don't have driveways. So, the concern, and we've discussed this with the police department, and I think we would feel like in that area, because it's so dense, we would either have to, I'd say, make, go quite a ways away from the corner, maybe 50 feet or more to allow, if you turned down that block and two cars came head-to-head, that you weren't turning right into an oncoming car or making it simply parking on one side of the street. So, that, that takes care of those two. Those are the concerns we have. From a, from a purely mid-block flow standpoint, I think you'll find that these will operate much like any other residential street, once that entrance is closed off at Kroger. Seventh and Eighth Street, Mr. Loveland mentioned that. We don't, Eighth Street is 24 feet wide for most of its length and it has parking on one side. So, again, we're back to the same discussion where you don't have two dedicated lanes of travel. The belief is, I think most of us would share that belief, that Eighth Street is not likely to carry as much traffic as it does today if you take its one-way pair status away. Actually, you'd probably shift more traffic to Sixth than you would any other place because of where the signal is. And right now, again, Sixth Street is 26 feet wide with parking on one side. So, Sixth almost operates similar to Eighth in that some of the people going eastbound now would elect to use Sixth. I know I do when I'm in that area. I'll elect to use Sixth Street because I know I'll come out with a traffic signal. So, the problematic one where we, Mr. Pastu and I discussed potentially widening the block is there's one block of Seventh Street, which is again 26 feet, similar to everything else, would give you that 18 feet of clear space, so a nine-foot lane each direction. But there is one block between Bacon and Union where there are very few driveways and the parking is pretty dense. That's where you get into your problem, is if you have 200, 300 feet where there's a solid wall of cars and you can't, you don't have enough room to wait for the other car to pass. So, we had developed a cost estimate for that, to widen out that 600 feet of roadway to like 30 feet to give us that passage on there. We do think that might be a choke point if this were fully implemented all at once. We are, we are looking at this, obviously it makes sense that the pairs should be done independently. Cass and Harrison need to go together. Seventh and Eighth need to go together. Whether they all four go together is, is kind of a decision we still haven't fully gotten, gotten to yet. So, those are some of the concerns and some of the choke points that we, that we might have. I do want to stress, like we said, operationally, we don't believe any of these intersections are going to see big backups or anything like that. We're just looking at the geometrics as being sort of a limiting factor on a few of these things. So, we, speaking a little bit more to the traffic signal at Kroger, that was a situation and Mr. Loveland and I had a number of discussions about this because that's one where, from a modeling standpoint, he's absolutely correct, we need, it should be about a 50-50 split of green time because there is a lot of traffic coming out of that shopping center, but I feel like he does. Any of those people that are turning right on Monroe Street, if they start to see a backup at that traffic signal, will probably go down the parking lot, down the drive aisle and go out by the gas station. There's no real reason for them to wait at the signal if they're going to turn right. It'll just be the people turning left that want to go towards town that will probably want to continue to use that signal. I don't know if MDOT's going to grant us the request that we would have. They can be funny about some of those things. You know, a 50-50 split on a shopping center driveway to them is, I don't know if that, that may be a bridge too far, but if it doesn't, I think we both feel there will be some stabilizing here. This, this is not a static network. If we make all these changes today, I don't think we can adequately model what every individual driver's going to do. They're going to come up and look down the block, say, "I've got five cars in front of me. I think I'll go left this time and go to Sixth Street." Whereas another day, if they're coming through at 11 o'clock in the morning, they may just continue on straight down Seventh. So, I think there's a lot of fluidity to what would happen if we were to implement this today. So, I, I'll probably leave it at that, Mr. Pastu. I think I've talked enough for one evening.
Yeah. You know, our sense of it is, before we proceed any further with that, we, as Mr. Lewis indicated, that clearly, I think we need to widen that portion on Seventh between Union and Bacon, that 600-foot area because of the on-street parking and I think that's the one thing. And I think all of this has to go together at once, including the closing of Cass there at the Southern City Limit to Kroger and, and it will change the dynamic of the flow. I think Cass and Harrison will function like neighborhood streets again rather than through streets. As a result of that, we'll still look at probably, and they'll be each of those probably having on-street parking one, in one direction and, but I think the key to it is making sure that Seventh functions where the on-street parking, where it's at its greatest, isn't an inhibitor of traffic flow coming from and going to and from Telegraph and Monroe. So, and that was part of the purpose for tonight is to go through the presentation and also to, to share with you our recommendation as to what we would, from a staff standpoint, recommend before proceeding.
Mr. Pastu, I don't know if you wanted to get into this tonight, but one of the things that we, we did discuss is long-range, if the traffic truly does what we think it's going to, model-wise, when it's time for the next signal upgrade with MDOT, we may consider moving that to Seventh Street if that's, if the traffic justifies. It may be that the traffic continues using Sixth Street eastbound and it, and it doesn't make that big of a difference, but those are long-range things. They don't have to be done as part of this implementation. We think the overall grid system has enough functionality that people can find their own routes through and it won't be, it won't be centered on one or, one or two roadways.
So, I'm looking at council, see if there's any questions for either Stephen or Patrick and then we'll kind of go from there. I see there's two. John, I'll come back. Oh, Brian, go ahead.
Sure. Just a couple of questions really regarding this. I know that we were discussing a backdoor entrance through one of the parking lots going onto Cass, if we closed off Cass. Is that still an issue? Did we think about that?
I think, well, the one, the one driveway was, the only concern we had about somebody being able to get through was the, largely, I mean, we've got to worry about...
The alleyway.
We got, yeah, the alleyway. There's a di, we're going to have to kind of close it diagonally because of the bank drive-through driveway, kind of comes out skewed a little bit with Long Court, so we can't cut it off as a 90-degree to the roadway travel, but it is the alley. That is coming out the alley between Cass and Monroe Street. We didn't model any traffic using the alley because it's basically 12 feet wide.
Well, there's no reason to use it at this time point because it's still open.
No, and that is one other thing. I hadn't included that in my discussion, but yeah, that's, that's one of the, one of the things that we still need to decide. Do we need to close that off as well to kind of block every possible access point there? And it may be that that's the case. That's something fortunately that we can do in relatively short order, but whether we decide to do it with the initial implementation or wait to see if it's a problem, I, there, that's up for some discussion still.
Do you see any problems occurring with emergency equipment or DPS equipment or refuse equipment coming in?
On Cass, really the only, we don't plow, we wouldn't plow the alley, so the alley itself is not a problem if you block that off. We would, we're in a little better shape on Cass and Long Court than we might be some, some other places. Suppose theoretically we'd snow, throw the snow over the guardrail. I don't know whether we'd want to do that or not, but because we have the turn at Long Court, it's a little, we've got a little more flexibility, but it's, it's like any other dead end. I mean, we're, it's, it's less than ideal, but it's not, I think, given what we're talking about here, it's, you know, it's, it's a trade-off we'd be, we'd be willing to make.
We have a number of dead ends throughout the city that we've dealt with.
Yeah, way, way more than I'd like, but it's, but it's...
More of the, the rest of the street, not just the dead end portion of it.
Oh, as far as plowing, being, you know, tight quarters and things.
Getting down, if you have two-sided parking, both sides of the street.
Well, it's really no different than it is now, other than it's one-way. I mean, so when we're, when we're plowing snow, we're, you know, it's, really, it's no different than, than geometrically it is now. If we, if we don't make any changes now and leave the parking where it is, it's the same, it's the same undertaking as we have now. I will say, one of the changes that, that I kind of put this out there, if Cass, if Cass is cut off at Kroger and Harrison and they're both made two-way streets, we would probably reevaluate those. Right now, they're plowed as major streets, so they're in the major street routing. If we were to make those truly neighborhood streets, they'll probably get a lower priority for snow removal. So, I just want to put that out there so everyone's aware of that. Probably north of Third Street, we'd continue to maintain them as majors, but south of that, they would no longer be serving that function.
When I read through the report, my understanding is that by closing off Cass Street, theoretically, the, the traffic volumes on Cass, the balance of Cass declined by about 50%.
That's roughly what we believe based on the counts that Mr. Loveland's firm took. Yeah.
So, Cass goes from basically a commercial street, because it serves commercial traffic, to a residential street.
Essentially. I mean, when you, when you look at the numbers, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a whole lot different than Harrison or Smith or, or any of the other streets in that grid.
Other comments from council or questions? I have a couple, but Michelle?
What is it going to look like when this is blocked off? Is it going to be a guardrail? Are we going to put clumps of cement?
We would probably start with a guardrail and then we, you know, I mean, it's one of those things that we, we want to work something a little more permanent into our capital improvements program, I believe, but it could be done effectively right from the start with a guardrail.
Thank you.
We'll start with the simplest and work our way up, make it look pretty when we're done.
So, that's my first question. I think that's kind of been, Brian asked the one about the alleyway going, I'll just say, between Cass and South Monroe. Going to have to mitigate that in some fashion. In other words, it's going to have, be funneling through the, the backstreets versus what the intent of this is, is to put people on main streets. But with that, the closure of Cass, as Michelle just asked, I'm curious where and how and I know there's some things we'll have to figure out as far as where that actually is, so residents can, in the city can get down Long Court, but also there's homes down there that are not in the city, correct?
There's one home, I believe, off of Cass on the west side.
Right.
Everyone else faces Long Court and they are, the south half of, of Long Court are actually township residents, but they face Long Court, which is a city street.
Right.
So, there would be one resident that would be isolated off of the closed street that would have to access through private property.
Okay. So, I just, those are just things that we'll have to obviously work toward if, as this moves along to see how that is and of course, we'll have to have discussions with Monroe Township as well regarding this because it does impact a couple of residents. You know, the traffic clearly from the, as you pointed out, the volume that probably would be reduced, but also it's, who's using it as well as other residents of the city that are going down a city street to accommodate their business. And so, making this change is also going to have a negative impact toward other city residents that use the facility or may go there for the shopping, so.
Yeah, we did not identify, just to make it clear.
We don't know who it is.
Yeah, we, we did not study who and where and where the distribution traffic was going. So, that's a good, a very good point, Mayor. I apologize if we didn't bring that up as part of the study.
So, we don't know who's coming out of the Kroger that may be coming onto Cass and it may be the next group that are residents that use that and obviously choose that, but that's, we'll, we'll get there when that comes up. So, consideration on a, because it was talked about, most people probably go to that north entrance, but using that alleyway that's north of the Kroger that goes out to Monroe Street, I, I think the resolution there is simply no left turn. I think it's hazardous. I see people now that sit there and are waiting to make a left turn to go north on Southbound Monroe. Not sure why, but they do because they may not want to stand in the queue in the line out of the, where the traffic light is out there, but you know, that's also not our jurisdiction.
Would not have the power to...
We don't have the jurisdiction over that, but MDOT could.
Um, I don't know that MDOT even could unless it was part of a site plan. It was part of, part of physical modifications they could impose and they usually do when that, if that's being physically altered, but I don't believe they can independent of that.
I just, I only bring these up because they're secondary things or conversations that'll come forward. Doesn't really focus necessarily on the, on the display that's there with the streets and the change from one-way to two-way in traffic, but it does alter other items we should be considering. And the last one is, and I think this will probably come in the long term if this comes to be, how the turning from South Monroe Street northbound onto Seventh Street, because Seventh Street is a street that goes straight out to Telegraph. There's a traffic light there as well, but there's no traffic light on Seventh Street. I, I agree with you, Patrick. Many people do go up to Sixth Street because there is a traffic light and then they'll find a way back to get, when they go up to Union and go back up a block to Seventh and, and head forward. And others go up to Front Street for, down Union as well, which is an option. So, there's ways to get there. I just, I think how we mitigate some discussions that may come in the future as this is.
It's not, it's not perfect. I mean, nothing we do here is going to be perfect. There will be some, you know, some of those, a lot, I'll say a lot of tweaking will probably have to occur once we, there may be some unanticipated movements and people going down certain streets, but you know, we modeled it the best we could. There's no way on a grid like this to be able to count for where everybody will choose to go.
I think there's another option, it's not within the city's purview to do, but Kroger, if you're heading west out of the lot, I mean, it's not the, the most, it's not the best parking lot and behind. It's fine out front, but there is a gravel pathway that goes out to neighborhood and you talk about access of, of, well, I guess it does have a street there. Merkel. It's called Merkel and the idea, I think that's what it says.
Yeah.
It's hard to see, hard to read there. Then maybe it changes to 11th Street.
Somebody put some, somebody put some grading back there not too long ago, so it's a little better than it was.
I bring it up is, is we have, if we're going to have conversations with the township regarding the closure, looking at the, there's an alternative for entrance and egress for those that maybe feel they're not accommodated to be able to get there. We could, we could maybe support that. Not opposed to people going to North Monroe Street or some, sorry, South Monroe Street to get in and out of Kroger, but also if everybody's going there, then obviously the volume's there and I think, Steve, you made that point, it, I probably will require some timing change on that as well. So, I'm just looking at some other alternatives that might kind of enhance the discussion as we go forward. It's kind of my point on that. So, other comments or questions from council? Andrew?
So, you made to mention that right now, if the changes were made to two-way, it would be operationally effective on Cass and Harrison to do so. However, the initial concern and is kind of remaining the concern is, is how do you accommodate the parking and how do you accommodate the traffic around the parking that you're expected to have in those areas? in those areas? And you mentioned that, well, in the future, we're going to do some bumpouts, but I mean, it's not in this year's budget that we're going to be voting on tonight.
No, I meant offsets. Actually, we just pushed prohibited parking for the first 50 feet or so to give someone turning a corner at least a car length to say, oh, there's somebody coming the other direction. No, I didn't mean any physical construction, Councilman. Sorry about that.
Okay, okay. So we're not actually anticipating the streets to get any wider?
No. Only that block of Seventh Street that we were talking about that we think because of, Seventh will be a different animal entirely, just because that is likely to kick, that is likely to have an increase in volume. Of any of the streets in here, that will likely increase, at least on the initial run of it. So we think that one needs to be accommodated. But the other ones, we feel the north-south, Cass and Harrison are highly unlikely to pick up any traffic migrating from Monroe Street, and in fact, the on-street parking is a traffic calming device that's used in a lot of neighborhoods to try to keep people saying, oh, I don't want to drive down this street. And that's the whole idea. If you live there, you need to be able to get through, but you don't need to be able to get through quickly. So I think, I think on Cass and Harrison, it may be even worth just trying it with what we've got and seeing, all right, do we need to take parking off this block? It may be worth it, but, you know, it also may be worth wanting to get it right and take that parking off and, you know, but you've got to, we've got to figure out where we're going to accommodate the people that are currently using it.
No, I agree. So you think that considering the parking situation that is there now, after the traffic volume is reduced by 50% by closing the end of the street, you're going to be able to facilitate the traffic that's going to occur on those streets, making them two-way?
Yeah, I believe so. Cass Street should, the only, like I said, the only potential choke point is that between Fifth and Sixth, and even that's only just how much, you know, how dense is that parking on a particular day? Because if the traffic volumes drop, as we believe they will, based on the volume coming out of Kroger, it should not function any different than any other street in that neighborhood. And a lot of those have pretty tight quarters and seem to function okay. So, and again, like I said, maybe it's a situation where if people are trying to use it two-way, the people that we don't want using it, which is the through traffic, the non-neighborhood traffic says, all right, I'm done. I'm done using Cass. I don't, I don't like having to face a car coming at me the other direction. Whereas right now, they turn that corner, they know there's nobody coming at them. So those are the advantages, and that's why on-street parking as a traffic calming device can do some good here.
I certainly agree with that. My other issue certainly would just, like with the mayor's issue, would just be on Seventh. Pretty much if your house is on that map, your commute just got that much longer because you can't turn into the back of your neighborhood as well. Now, maybe it takes some traffic off your streets, which you're appreciative of, but there's not really any way that you, I mean, with the removal of the shortcuts, everyone's commute on that map just got longer. Now, I live on the west side of town, so I'm always going to go down to Front or Elm and then take that down and cross over Telegraph. But everyone who lives in the back of Kroger is, we've now limited their entrance and egress options. So that's certainly something to take into account. Don't want to put two lights in a way, but put two lights in a row with two blocks, but did the study have anything to say about realigning where those are located or just suggesting you take Sixth instead of Seventh?
It did not. We did not consider realigning the traffic signals in those cases, mostly just because the level of service that was even with the changed traffic volumes, the level of service didn't necessarily justify a signal at Seventh.
And we had talked about it, and why the signal at Sixth makes sense is because you got the middle school there. You have a lot of pedestrians that cross or that drive straight to the school through that intersection. So you'd really have to wait and see what happens to determine if you would need to move the signal.
Right. The only consideration I think I would look at is, as you said, on Seventh, that's the only way through Telegraph. Six doesn't go straight there, so you'd have to cut over at some point. So it's those western streets up into the neighborhoods where you're going to have people cutting over a block and then taking Seventh the rest of the way. So have we assessed any traffic considerations in terms of the increase of those, you know, those intersections, which right now probably aren't trafficked nearly as much as they could, because that 50% that were taken away from Cass, half of it's going back there?
I suppose that's, I wouldn't say half of it, because I don't think everybody that would use that cut through to Cass necessarily is in that neighborhood, but I see your point. And, you know, to some degree, not moving the traffic signal might be a good idea as well, because then that will force some people to find other ways. I mean.
The traffic signal, the traffic signal will provide gaps that would allow people to turn left onto Eighth Street, left onto Seventh Street.
But it doesn't now.
You know.
Yeah, the people turning left onto Seventh, coming on Northbound Monroe Street, use the gaps from the Sixth Street signal. It would just be, if there's enough traffic that says, I'm just going to keep trucking on Seventh Street, I'm getting on at Telegraph, and I'm going to keep going until I run out of street. I mean, that's what some people do. If they get all the way to Monroe Street eastbound, they won't have a signal to get out. Is the gap from the Sixth Street light and the Jones Avenue light enough that they can get out turning left if they need to? The model showed that there was, that there was enough gap space there for that to happen. But if more traffic migrates to Seventh than we believe, that may not be the case. But again, going back to, if it starts to back up at Cass Street, and people know that on my daily commute, oh, I'm taking Seventh Street at 4:30 in the afternoon, I better go up to Sixth Street because it's going to be backed up at Monroe Street. That's what you're going to see. You're going to see people independently making those choices that will stabilize the flow on all the numbered cross streets, if you will. It'll divide it up a little better than it is now even.
We even looked at some of the traffic coming off of Telegraph down Seventh and then turning on Union to get to Sixth Street to go that way, because once you know you want to get to that Sixth Street signal, you might make, take the first choice available.
Or you might take you. In Street to Third. You know, I mean, there's a lot more people that may say, I'm going to go up to Third Street. Infinite number of ways.
We can think of an infinite number of ways in which the people could probably travel and why they travel, and I don't think I can tell you why everybody travels the way they do. I think the traffic, if it's not coming out of the Krogers on Cass Street, will go over to Monroe Street. They'll find their way in which they turn as they normally would if they're going further west. One of the reasons I believe that the traffic light is at Sixth, because it, on the other side east aligns with La Plesance. So that's where, of course, there's another reason why I think people, traffic coming in, they turn left onto Sixth, they go up to the traffic light and decide where they're going to go, whether it's left, right, or straight, or they turn right and come down through Scott. I think that's another reason. Seventh doesn't go through other than one block to Washington, and it'd be a challenge for people then going east to find two different ways to go. So, but Vince, I know that we have some other items, and I know looking.
If I could just go back to one item, and I'm just going to, if you can go to page three on this study.
Yep.
If you look at Southbound or Northbound Cass between page three on the, you've literally during the peak hours, a weekday peak PM, you've got 200 vehicles going through that block between Eighth and Seventh. That's a residential area, 200 vehicles. That's kind of what this is all about, is how do you take that volume of traffic off there?
Mm-hmm.
You can see that in that case, you've got 120 vehicles moving, you know, turning and heading west on Seventh, 76 going straight, which is remarkable in itself, and only foregoing back to the east. 200, think of 200 vehicles during a peak hour going through one neighborhood block. That's part of the reason for looking at this. And I think it's important to understand that when you start altering the two-way, this will change dramatically, I think, and part of the reason why I think it does make some sense to give it consideration, so.
So this is a work session, so it's not, I admit, it's on council agenda for decisions. This was a report back to the council. The administration is recommending that council not take any action this evening as well, as which was within the manager's correspondence, and that strongly support, while they support the conversion, but only if recommended widening takes place, which is in regards to Seventh Street. And so it's how the network works together as far as traffic flow. So that's kind of where we're at for council, if there's any other comments or questions. Mr. Passu, and I did speak just before the meeting, earlier this afternoon, late this afternoon, because I know there's many people that are here. Work session, and generally, we have public comment time that's at our council meeting. I'm not sure we'll get through our other agenda that, a special meeting this before?
Yeah, if we take public comment, which is, you know, fine by me, that what I would recommend if we carry over too far past seven o'clock is to, at the end of the regular meeting, add a closed session for the items that we had on the special meeting.
So knowing some of the residents are here, that's kind of our opportunity, if there is some comments, I'd ask you, obviously, rules of the chamber, as we always have and are on every agenda, is we do ask people to limit their comments to three minutes. If you're saying the same comment, you can simply say a support.
My name is Jan Ramo.
Hold on, I'm done yet, please. So I make sure everybody understands, so otherwise, we have to have a time that we have to adjourn before the next meeting, and we'll do our special meeting at the end. Yes, and your name and address, please?
I live at 527 Cass Street. My name is Jan Ramo. I was a school crossing guard for 21 years. My worried about the parking is bad. I'm worried about the children in my neighborhood. What about your grandkids? My grandkids, future grandkids. They're our future. Not these parking cars. Why don't we leave things alone? For 55 years, I've lived in this town. I'm done with this. I want to get out of here. We need things brought uptown, not worry about a parking street. I have counted the cars in my neighborhood from Sixth Street to Fifth. There was 13 cars on one side, no driveways. Where are we going to put our cars? Tell me. Am we going to put in your yard or your yard? No. I'm getting upset over this. I think it's ridiculous. There's better things to do than worry about parking.
Well, so this is about the traffic and the flow, so I'm.
There is no bad flow. I've lived there for 15 years.
So I'll take from your comments that you don't support changing this from a one-way to two-way. Is that correct?
Pardon?
I said, I'll take from your comments that you don't support changing Cass Street from a one-way to two-way.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Ready?
Yes.
Bob Gelbey at 511 Harrison. I'm opposed to the whole idea. We have a one-way street and city buses, school buses, street trucks, and the car haulers and packaging trucks fly down our road every day. I watch them. They don't slow down. From Third to Sixth is no stop signs, and they speed. And there's children in this neighborhood, and the road is in such disrepair, you can ask Mr. Lewis, because I've talked to him a couple of times on this road. There's no intention of repairing the road, okay? But the thing of it is, I would have to get out of my car into the opposing traffic, no matter which side you put the parking, if you took away one side of the parking, a danger to us to getting out of our cars every day, because we have no driveways. You see what I'm saying? You know, open your car door into the traffic. There's not enough room in that road. It's a narrow, it's narrowed down there. If you take a street truck or a bus, they're probably 10, 12, 15 feet wide, you know, and you got like 40 feet across there. You lose one thing, I mean, that's it. That's about all I got to say about it. I'm opposed to it.
Thanks, Gelbey. Other comments from residents, if you wish? This is not a decision council's making this evening, but we do have the opportunity for those to make comments, since I know you're here. Yes, sir?
Ralph Woodbury, Long Court. Two questions and one comment. First question is for the gentleman from the company. Did you do any studies of physically sitting there watching anything? Because we watched them put up the counters on the side of the streets and everything, and how many cars did not stop the stop sign or anything like that to change the flow of things?
Woodbury?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So we do have, obviously, the traffic council within the study, and that can be obviously made available.
And number two is, like the old saying, never assume anything.
Right.
He said pulling out of the north side of Kroger parking lot, turn west, excuse me, south, north, on Monroe Street. I sit there at 5:00 on a Friday behind three people trying to turn left. They don't use the light. And my final question is to Mr. Lewis. He made the comment about when they closed the road off, that people, some of the people in Long Court may have to use a private drive or something? That's what I thought you said.
The question I had was, is you're looking at Long Court, and if there's houses that are in the township that would have to access that, and I think the answer was that there's a residence that's on the corner.
That's, there are driveways off on Long Court, but we would have the same access as the city.
Right, but if they didn't come that way, they'd have to access through the private property, meaning Krogers.
Oh, we'd have to go wherever we'd have to go. What I'm saying is, if you put it there, we'll have to go around the block. The only thing is, the fire department would have to know, they would have to go around Eighth Street to get to us. Small thing, hopefully never happens.
Absolutely.
But I'm missing, I'm missing a story, Patrick.
Yeah, but I think when he meant private drive, it was, if it was the township residents that are there, they'd have to, if it was put further toward north on Cass, then the person living there would have to come through the private drive, meaning Kroger, not the residence on Long Court.
Yeah, with what you got. Thank you.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, Mr. Woodbury. Any further comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Clark and the city council. First, thanks for sending out this letter and everything. Really appreciate the opportunity to come here, kind of speak to you. When I first heard about the project of changing Harrison and Cass to two-way streets, I'm sorry, I live 731 Harrison Street.
That's good. We're good.
So I'm kind of in the thick of all the going on. I'm not really opposed to that. I mean, if we're taking a look seriously on how to make our city better, I'm all for it, but there are some concerns, and I think some of those were touched on, especially the 700 block on Harrison. There's a lot of duplexes and multi-home families that, you know, are forced to park in the street, and so unless there's any widening, I really see that being problematic. I'm fortunate enough to have a detached garage in the back and access from an alley onto Eighth Street. But the biggest thing that really brought me here was the statement about closing the southern entrance on Cass over to the Kroger. Now, over the weekend, I had an opportunity to speak to a bunch of my fellow neighbors, and we're all mixed a little bit on, you know, going from the one-way to the two-way. We see some of the advantage of it, but definitely was universal on opposing closing Cass Street. This is something that I use. It's a feature. I moved here in 2005, and when we were taking a look at properties, that's one of the things my wife and I looked at and said, you know what? I really like the fact that I'm that close to the Kroger, and I can easily come out of my alleyway, make one left, make one right, make a left. And we used to bank there when the bank was there, and it's no longer a bank, it's a learning center, except the little ATM, and that's very convenient. It's also very convenient that I can walk there without having to go all the way up to Monroe Street or being forced to walk down an alley. Now, not just me, but young people. There's disabled people that live in my neighborhood. I know that there's one young lady that's in a motorized wheelchair, and we're telling that individual, if we close Cass Street, hey, you've got to go all the way up there to come back around to utilize the Kroger. So some of us residents that live in this area see that entrance to Kroger as a benefit. There's a lot of people, summer's coming up, there's going to be a lot of people that use their bikes. So instead of forcing them to go out in a high-traffic area such as Monroe Street, we've got that side street. Yeah, there is some traffic that goes, you know, down Cass, and that's a bit problematic. I would venture to say that, you know, lack of stop signs on Eighth and people gunning it up and down Eighth is more of a problem for young kids than it being one-way or two-way. So you can mark me down, I'm definitely opposed to blocking off Cass. I think having that access is a feature, not a bug. I think it adds something to the community, and it definitely adds something to my neighborhood. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for comments. Other comments here this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Can I clarify on the sidewalk issue?
Yeah, we need to.
I didn't really stress this. Again, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services, before we get any farther down the comments, we did not contemplate closing any, either of the sidewalks. This is just the vehicular portion of the street. So there are comments made about bikes and wheelchairs and things. There are sidewalks going all the way through there. I wanted to make it clear that that's not part of the closure we would be proposing. That's it.
Yes, ma'am. I understand your.
I just wanted to add one thing. I understand what you're saying with the sidewalk, but the problem during, during the winter is those sidewalks don't get shoveled, so these disabled people are using the street to get where they need to go.
Okay.
So unless there's, there's some way to ensure that that's happening.
That's another complication that shouldn't be there, but that's where I guess we'll have to talk to the residents regarding shoveling their walks.
And thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Gunter, and I live at 721 Cass Street, and I am totally opposed to the two-way traffic. It's, I don't like it because it'll be so tight. The parking will be terrible. The parking's bad now, and it's going to only become worse. I think there's going to be a lot of traffic in the alley between 7th and 8th Street. I think people will really use that alley. So I seen, uh, I don't think, I think that emergency vehicles will have a problem also, so. I'm just totally opposed to it.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Other comments? Yes, sir. Name, street?
Zach Seibert, 422, uh, one of the 200 that goes to Kroger. Uh, been going there, eight, well, I've been here 31 years, Monroe, so I've been going there since I could drive, and closing that's, I think that's just a bad idea. We're going to focus all the traffic in the one spot. We're going to move it from here, and we're going to put it here. So my commute time is going to go up through the roof. I mean, that's a lot. I mean, and two-way parking, uh, two-way, uh, streets, I don't agree with that. Harrison, what do we got? Like, uh, seven, eight apartments around us? Um, yeah, there's no parking. So you, uh, put all the parking on one side of the street, there's no parking at all. So I oppose the, uh, Cass Street and Harrison for two-way, and I'm against closing down the, uh, Kroger, uh, entrance. I just think it's a bad idea. Going to have a lot of, uh, just unhappy people, me being one of them. That's all I got.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Other comments here? Yes, sir. Yes.
I live next door to him.
Okay.
418 Harrison, my name is Jerry Seibert, and it, as he mentioned, the parking on Harrison right now between 4th and 5th Street is tight. There's a lot of cars that are parked in there. I didn't hear anything about the parking as far as we say we're going to move it onto the other side of the street, but when you have, when it's jammed full on both sides of the street, how do you do that? And you're going to restrict parking so far in, uh, on each, at each intersection? I, I, I didn't know where is everybody going to go and where, where's the parking going to go? That's my question.
Yes, thank you. Any final comments from those present? Like I said, this is a work session, not for a decision on this this evening, so I appreciate everybody being here for your, sharing your comments. That's what we, uh, that's what we should expect, everybody come to meetings when there's items to be discussed. Vince, anything further?
Nothing else. So, you know, I just, the only thing I might just add, uh, you know, the lot of it, there was a concern at the, about parking, and, and at the start of this, uh, we had, uh, you know, Mr. Loveland indicate that the traffic flow, that there is not a problem. Uh, parking is, is obviously something, uh, of concern, and, and yes, there would be some movement of, uh, traffic circulation, but it would significantly reduce the flow through some of these neighborhoods, so. Long way to go. We, I've got to come back to council to talk a little bit further about, uh, the 7th Street, um, widening that would be needed, and, and we can talk further about what other traffic control orders, uh, would have to take place, including the, uh, on-street parking in this area, so. More to come.
Very well, and I know that we'll continue to keep, uh, the public involved as well as this continues to move forward in discussions. So we have our, uh, special meeting that was, uh, scheduled for this evening. Uh, we'll defer that, and we'll need, uh, some, uh, just want to kind of review some things for the upcoming city council meeting. We'll need to amend the agenda, uh, to include the, um, special meeting on that agenda, is that correct? Or just still a closed session?
So we're going to have to end up canceling the special session, special meeting. Is there anything we need to do, Matt?
Well, I'll, I'll look at Mr. Buds, because we do have an item to add to the closed session.
Tough time to do the special one?
It's pretty tight. Yeah. Yeah, I think we would be rushing to get through it.
Re, uh, rephrase that. I think we do have to take action not to, to, to hold this, the special meeting, but when it comes time at the end of the meeting on the closed session, we'll need to add an item to that. I think council received that information. Couple other items that came up as, uh, being reviewed, uh, staff just right before the meeting. Uh, there is a resolution that I appreciate council reviewing and signing just before the meeting, that, uh, I'm sorry, not, uh, not a resolution, but a proclamation would need to be added to the agenda. The proclamation regarding Arbor Day, because we will be at the school with the students on that day. And there was a notation in one of the resolutions, um, there's many that are in the public hearings. The one related to the sidewalk resolution will need to be amended. As you read closely, the first paragraph, uh, states that it refers to removing of shrubs, trees, and, and other, um, items such as that. It should have said sidewalks instead of that. So as we get there, we'll need to make sure that resolution on the sidewalk, uh, resolution doesn't have the language referring to trees and shrubs. That obviously goes with the grass cutting and the overgrowth.